Thank you very much for the comments from our liaison representatives. Yesterday, the board, for the first time, we were able to break bread together. We met with the students in the morning to accommodate their schedule. We met with faculty senate representatives, faculty liaisons at lunch. That was the first time that we were able to come together in person. We've been doing them via Zoom for a number of months. And I think it really does make a difference to be able to meet across, literally across this table, and break bread and have conversation together. Last week, the board also held a series of listening sessions. I personally made the phone calls to the student groups to make sure that you had representation. You were the first group that we met with last week and also with the faculty representatives to hear your comments, the criteria, names you wanted to bring forth as it relates to the interim president position. I thought those conversations were very healthy and helpful. And I hope that the combination of both of these activities within the last week can start us on a path of having a greater working relationship and partnership together. I think that's in the best interest of the entire campus community, but also both the board, faculty, and students. So I look forward to that. And in terms of my board comments, I'm going to start by some positive news and some celebrations because this is the time of year that we celebrate our trustee scholarship recipients. We have been putting them up on the screen so that we can scroll. So if we could get that started, I would like to acknowledge the students. These are the 4.0 students that received a $1,000 scholarship from the Board of Trustees. It's based on academic performance. It's not needs-based. And so we recognize them at the end of every semester. In June, we had so many this last year. We had a special reception for all of them. The provost spoke, the president spoke, I spoke on behalf of the board. But it was a very nice evening. They had their families and their academic advisors in attendance. And so we'll be doing something similar again this year. But I wanted to make sure that we recognize these recipients. Also, in the past just couple of weeks, we've had numerous ribbon cuttings on campus. And we should be celebrating this. Spartan greens are the artificial turf fields. They are very well-received by students and the club sports. And I know they are well-used and have been very active. The Demer Engineering Building, trustee T. Bay spoke at that. We had a ribbon cutting. Again, this is student-focused. It's collaborative space for the engineering clubs, whether it's the race car or the electric vehicles, or it is the biomedical. So it's collaborative space that these students can come together on. And then trustee Foster participated in this TechSmith ribbon cutting. She may talk in greater detail about that. But I know that was multiple years in the progress before that ribbon could be cut. We also had the women's soccer team that, for the first time in school history, they were the Big Ten champions. So we should give congratulations to coach Jeff Hostler, as well as all of the female athletes on the soccer team. So there's a lot to be excited and to celebrate across campus. I want to personally congratulate Dr. Dean, or yes, Dean, Dr. Kelly Millenbaugh. I'm a graduate of the College of Agriculture, but I know her personally and I know how well she will serve the agricultural community. And I'm very pleased to see her in that position. I don't know, is Kelly in the room today? Kelly, congratulations. I don't know if the dean of nursing is...
I don't think she was.
Okay, okay. I look forward to meeting her. Usually I have my notes typed out. These are my notes today. And I do that largely because of my vision issues. So I'm going to be, a lot of this is going to just come from the heart today. It's not something that I have down on paper. But I know I take very seriously the comments by faculty, students, and the broader MSU community in terms of what's going on with board dynamics and how do we move forward with a win-win and very productive working relationships across campus. I'm committed to that as we make progress on an interim president. We are making progress. We're making progress together. We are listening to our constituencies out here. And we're taking your comments to heart. And I think that's all positive for us moving forward. The board's committed to professional development. We talked about it. We are currently working with AGB right now on rewriting board bylaws. And we need to go through our policies and procedures in priority order. That will be top of mind next year. It's going to take at least a year to go through those board policies and procedures. But that will be under a new chair. And so that will be work that will be prioritized next year. I'm hoping that we can make progress on board bylaws yet this year. So that's a work in progress, but we do take that very seriously. And I think we all want to heal. I'm very proud of this university. We are doing great things. And I could list pages of all that is exciting going on here right now because we are literally hitting at all levels where our academic scholarship is increasing, our student achievement is increasing, the strategic plan. And for the gentleman that spoke earlier, our number one priority in the strategic plan is student success. It's about graduation rates. If you get accepted at Michigan State University, we will graduate you. That's our commitment. And we are following that with our actions and our resources and a campus-wide commitment. The strategic plan gets us all kind of rowing in the same direction. And we will get back to, the strategic plan, in spite of all of our stumbles, has not gotten off track. So that will continue to be a focus. And that's something that unites the campus community. So I think that's very important. So I want you to just know that I personally take it to heart. I believe my colleagues share that in terms of what's in the best interest of the university. And I want to say just a few words to President Stanley. And again, I don't have anything prepared. But Dr. Will, thank you for your comments. You gave of your service on the search committee. It was appreciated. And all of those individuals that served on the search committee, trustee Foster and I co-chaired that search committee. We spent 13 months preparing and working with the campus community to be able to hire the 21st president at Michigan State University. And President Stanley, during your course here, I'm very proud of your service. And I'm very proud of what you were able to accomplish here. You're leaving us sooner than what I had anticipated or would like. But that doesn't diminish the success and the progress that's been made across campus and the foundation that has been set so that we can continue to make progress. And so I think less is always more. And so I will conclude my remarks at this point in time. Thank you very much.
Well, now it's turn to trustee comment period. We'll hear from Vice Chair Kelly.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments today. First of all, I too want to thank the president for his service. And I also want to state that I do want to work with the constituents of the university with regard to selecting the new president and the search committee that will get that done. As Chair of the ARC Committee, the Audit Risk and Compliance, I think I need to address what we did here today, which is actually what probably started a lot of these issues. It didn't just start 60 days ago, though, when we hired Honeymann to take a look at the certification process in 2021. There's been an ongoing frustration with the board. And I don't want to speak for any other board members, but certainly with myself as well for quite a while, for over two years, quite frankly. And it has to do with the OIE certification process. I think there are a significant number of failures. But when the concerns were raised that we may not have been in compliance in 2021, I felt as if it was a responsibility of the Audit Risk and Compliance to determine whether that in fact was the case. This was not a fishing expedition. This was not a witch hunt. This was something that, quite frankly, personally, I did not want to have to get into. But the fact of the matter is, and I believe the results are, and the report is not finalized, but it will be released. And personally, I'm very proud of this board that we are unanimous in releasing a report that all of you will see and come to your own conclusions as to what happened or what didn't happen. I've heard comments that maybe this was not that big of a deal. For me personally, it was a big deal. And I'm happy to report that based upon our legal advice, we are now in compliance. I want to thank the Honeymann Law Firm for helping us get there. It was important over the last 60 days. And we rushed this report to get it out to the community so that you at least understood what our concerns were. This was not only a legitimate look back, this was a necessary and a required look back. I am not happy with the immediate resignation of the president. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Trustee Foster.
Thank you. I too wanted to acknowledge TechSmith's ribbon cutting last month. And hopefully that will serve as an anchor for a very robust research and technology park in our former Spartan Village. I'd also like to recognize our MSU women's soccer team for outright winning the Big Ten championship. And yesterday, Coach Hostler was named Coach of the Year in the Big Ten. I too, as you know, served on the Presidential Search Committee, which was an amazing experience, spanning 13 months and selecting Samuel L. Stanley Jr., MD, as our 21st president. And this is a better place because of his leadership and expertise. He helped us establish three strategic plans that are incredibly important that will lead this university into the next century. And most important to me, he has assembled just an exceptional team of executive leadership that I've truly enjoyed working with you, your professionals. And I was going to name you, but I figured I'd forget somebody. But it just, I really can't say enough accolades about our EVP team here at Michigan State. And Sam, I wish you and Ellen and your family all the very best. And finally, we have an election coming up. And the citizens of the state of Michigan, you have the opportunity to elect two trustees. And I hope you elect trustees who want to unselfishly serve this. Renee, best luck to you.
Thank you.
That concludes my remarks.
Trustee.
Graduation rates, employment, and all of that. But you are reminding me it's always so important to not just look at the high-end data and the numbers, but also the anecdotes and the individual stories that matter. And so I really appreciate you taking the time to be here to help us focus on that. And our faculty and students, as always, I appreciate everything that you are saying. And in particular, I want to echo and emphasize the concerns about accessibility of our meetings, the time and the process and all of that, how we are communicating. I appreciate your willingness to still believe in us. And I appreciate the reminder that we always need to be thinking about having more inclusive in a particular, with respect to naming buildings, which we are going to be doing soon, hopefully with our multicultural center and other areas, and thinking about donor recognition. So I want to also address the fact that some of you may be wondering why I haven't spoken publicly at all about the recent controversy. And I know some have found that frustrating. And I will say it's a couple of reasons. First, I believe that trustees individually speaking out isn't in the best interest of the university. And then also, I'm mindful that soon after I joined this board, we unanimously came together and adopted the first-ever MSU Board of Trustees Code of Ethics and Conduct. And one of the provisions of that does say that about board business, we have to speak through official channels. That's the president, the secretary, and the chair. And so I have been very mindful of that. I have asked this board to come together on a unified response to the various no-confidence votes because I want you to know that we are paying attention and that we hear you. We haven't done that, as you know. And I believe that that silence has allowed false facts to dominate the debate. And so I want to speak now as an individual because I can't speak on behalf of the board. I'm a professor. I'm a law school administrator in addition to my volunteer service as a trustee. And so I certainly respect and appreciate the process for academic bodies to take a step like a no-confidence vote. And I think, in particular with respect to our lack of communication, that it was warranted and that we needed to hear it. But the board has been criticized for acting outside its role. And in part of that, there are aspects from those no-confidence votes that aren't based on correct facts. And I think it's important for us to try to explain. So I want to be clear about this. From the moment I joined the board in 2019, in December of 2019, I have diligently fulfilled my governance obligations while simultaneously advocating for Title IX to be the floor. That's our minimum legal obligation, but not the ceiling for all that we do to keep students, faculty, staff, and the entire Spartan community safe. And here are some examples. Before I took office, the board refused to release the NASA documents. I found a third way, which was to review them myself. One could have envisioned a no-confidence vote for that because it's true that board members shouldn't be involved in day-to-day management of what the university is doing. But I view that as a governance obligation, given the circumstances of my appointment. Now, the trustee had resigned, the board was in crisis. I won't go on more. I have a public statement about that that you can read on my website. And I did ultimately still call for their release. That work, I did it because it was the way that I could make sure that those needed to be held accountable had been. As another example, when I learned that the university had no formal policy for evaluating presidential performance, together with the board, we surveyed other universities, the Association for Governing Board, best practices. And we adopted unanimously and implemented a formal policy. And that is the official policy going forward. It brought an unprecedented level of transparency and accountability to the review of the president. And I expect that will be the standard going forward. And soon after we hired Provost Woodrow, I discussed with her how the university could improve the faculty discipline process when you have an instance of a misbehavior, misconduct that doesn't rise to the level of official finding under Title IX but needs to be addressed. In other words, what happens when there's a red flag that we can't necessarily officially get to in that formal process but needs some sort of enforcement or remediation? And that kind of conduct is something that none of us would want students or faculty to endure. And that conversation led to her leadership in bringing from the ground up through this campus collective action to produce a policy that this board ultimately unanimously put into effect that addresses those faculty discipline issues, among other changes. So I have been a constant champion of structural reforms to improve policies and procedures here at Michigan State for greater accountability and transparency and safety and healing. And I will continue to do so. And this leads me to turn to the issues surrounding the certification process or the Title IX reports and also the provost's decision regarding the leadership of the Broad College of Business. In each case, despite contrary reports, editorial board opinions, and the no-confidence votes, I have complied with my obligations as a trustee. Sometimes in intense conversations with the board and the administration, I supported the provost's right to make a decision about the Broad College of Business leadership, both in my personal conversations with her and also in our public vote in placing the interim leadership in that college. I have not interfered with administrative decisions. Indeed, I have not attempted to override ultimate determinations of the administration, even when I have agreed with you, Faculty Senate, and you, ASMSU, and others on important issues. For example, the Faculty Senate has raised concerns about transparency and hiring processes. And I have shared those and tried to amplify those. And absolutely, you have raised concerns about swim and dive. I have shared those concerns and tried to amplify those. When the Detroit Free Press article came out on September 11th, the board had threatened the president with an ultimatum. I was as shocked as anyone else in the MSU community to read that wasn't true. While the press can't be accurate every time, it was shocking that it could be wrong on such an important matter and a question as verifiable fact. I was also surprised and disappointed by President Stanley's resignation. It was not precipitated by a board vote. In fact, at the time, we were engaged in discussions about continuing his tenure to assure an orderly transition should he or the board determine that the university would go in a new direction. So I will join the Chair and Vice Chair in thanking President Stanley for his service. And I want to sort of wrap this up on a more positive note. Michigan State is an extraordinary institution. No person, no collection of board members, no coalition of faculty. We are a collective whole. And I firmly believe that we have to come together. And I'm going to continue promoting the university as long as I'm privileged to be a trustee. I would ask those of you who expressed no-confidence to consider and reflect also on my service here. And I am a trustee who is committed to academic freedom and her governance role. And a scholar myself, I'm a trustee who has championed the concerns of faculty, students, and staff. I'm a trustee who has tried to bring greater accountability and transparency in each thing I've done during my time on the board. I'm a trustee who has worked to increase and enhance campus safety and healing. I'm a trustee who acts on behalf of the university in the best interest of the university, regardless of politics or pressures. I'm a trustee who understands a wide range of perspectives within this Spartan community, having been a teaching-focused faculty member on an annual contract, having been eventually a fully-tenured professor on the law school faculty, the perspective of a spouse and a stepmother of two proud MSU graduates who as African-American men endured very difficult racial issues during their time on campus, but allowed their education to transform them and launch them on extraordinary career paths. I bring the perspective of a mother who raised toddlers on this campus who learned to walk while feeding ducks on the Red Cedar River, a mother whose son just received his acceptance to Michigan State University to be in the fall class of the coming year. So I understand the difficult role of being a trustee. I've spent more than two decades in higher education. And I think that the most important focus for us going forward is to consider that a trustee has to engage in the oversight of the university but not try to manage the university's day-to-day affairs. And it's a delicate balance because our fiduciary duties require that we advocate for faculty, students, and staff. We have to ask hard questions. And when governance concerns threaten the university's mission, we can't, as trustees, put our heads in the sand and ignore them. I have faithfully honored and fulfilled my duties as a trustee since Governor Whitmer appointed me in 2019, and I will continue to do so. And so I ask you, if you don't have confidence in these values that I try to embody, that I do, that I've lived out as a trustee, where in the end will you place your confidence? And I know there is one thing that I think all of us can agree on. And I want everyone who's spoken out on this to know, I hear you. The communication from the board must improve. We can't rely on the administration to be our voice. We cannot continue to operate the way the board has in the past. I hope that those of you who have been frustrated with the lack of communication in recent weeks and that, I share that frustration, that we will see meaningful change. I can promise you that you will see it from me for however long I am here. That's why I have spoken far longer than I ever have in trustee comments before. And I thank you for listening.
Trustee O'Keefe.
Thank you, trustee Knack Jefferson, for those comments. And Hannah, thank you for your comments. I think you have some insight as to what it's like to be a trustee, even though you've probably not served in that capacity. And I also want to thank the student liaison, Joe. You had by far the best presentation on the interim president search. We certainly appreciated the amount of student involvement you had. And you were very well organized on it. And it's a good recommendation from the students to give us a dedicated comms person because if you think about it, as a board, we don't. And so we're a little handicapped in trying things out. And I've got some fairly extensive comments today, too, so sit tight. I want to thank our provost and our president for their missive to the board and the Faculty Senate's vote of no-confidence because it brings great illumination to the comments that I'm about to make. At first, I was angry that that never solves anything. And then I was reflective and trying to understand the campus reaction. I have numerous friends at boards at other universities. They all remind me that you're not doing your job until you get a vote of no-confidence from the faculty, as silly as that sounds. But to the faculty and Senate, I want you to know that I am tired of reading about the sexual transgressions of the faculty, which are like reading Fifty Shades of Grey and are as long as gone with the wind without knowing what the outcomes are of such behavior. Whether I've read all the reports in question and whether, as a result of this effort, I have created a safer campus, there is no mechanism in place, although requested at almost every meeting, for the board to fulfill its duty to review. This deficiency falls to the president, who is solely responsible for the Title IX administration. The board is responsible for the health, safety, and welfare of the students on our campus. And I can assure you, we take that obligation very seriously. You criticize the board for not doing an independent investigation during NASA. And now you are criticizing the board for doing an independent review of the processes and procedures regarding the very controls that are in place to remove the sexual transgressors at the university. This vote and resolution to drop our investigations is a little bit like the fox telling the farmer not to fix the locks on the hen house. We are asked to accept that the process has improved because the fox is eating only four chickens instead of eight. Both are unacceptable after three years. When asked how long the board should wait after three years to get this fixed, the faculty board was silent, crickets, no response. Because it's ludicrous to think that we should even wait one more day. As a practical matter, the terminated dean hasn't asked for that, and why would he? This is about corralling the unchained sexual promiscuity of the faculty who seems to have unfettered access to our most vulnerable student population with little to no repercussions in some instances. We have weaknesses in our policies and procedures, which is obvious, but that is not my opinion. This is the opinion of outside consultants. The reviews are designed to fix a problem in our certification process and mitigate future damage to independently design and review the processes in place, which have been inconsistent and incomplete, inconclusive, and delayed, causing stress and dysfunction in the department. The hard-working staff of the Title IX department deserves better and is under tremendous stress as a result of this lack of oversight. The dean review is just a symptom of a major problem and serves to highlight the issues within the department so they can be remedied. No one, I mean, no one, has disputed the authority of the provost. The information from the Title IX office leading up to the termination is what's being questioned. As a father, the faculty protest is disgusting. The U of M Board of Regents does exactly what we are trying to do and get praised. At MSU, we only get the cheap-shot artists with no lack of decency. We are not, as a board, going to get pregnant with information on the sexual transgressions of the faculty without a plan to remove the excrement from this campus. As fiduciaries, we have that responsibility, and there should be no question on that. Lack of controls and process impact every aspect of life at MSU. Three years later, we are still waiting. The lack of institutional control, as defined by the NCAA, is the failure to display adequate compliance measures, failure to provide appropriate education on those measures, and failure to provide sufficient monitoring to ensure those compliance measures are met. We check every box in terms of failure. As to Title IX, instead of being exemplary, we have left the field in incompetence and inattentive to a mission we say we are committed to. The board is responsible for the oversight. The board is responsible for the oversight of these compliance measures, and we are tired of waiting for inactivity and empty promises. It is now becoming a reflection on us. As Bobby Knight once said, "If you are letting it happen, then you're coaching it." The board is not going to allow such nonsense and lack of accountability on this campus. The faculty and the MSU community need rules that are unambiguous, that are uniformly and timely enforced, and provide a level of accountability to create a safe environment for everyone who graces our campus. Bad culture eats good strategy every time, and culture at Michigan State needs to be fixed and quickly, or our strategy to excel will be unachievable. If academic freedom means doodling the most vulnerable on our campus without consequences, then yes, that freedom should be removed. With a number of reported events in the OIE office, you could easily make the argument that MSU is not a safe campus. So the next time you're compelled to take a no-confidence vote, I'll give you one. To the provost. Your response to the board and the MSU committee, I believe, was terribly uninformed. But at this point in time, the board will allow our outside consultants to advise us on the Title IX investigation you relied upon. As alum pointed out by her count, seven of the top nine nationally-ranked schools reside in the College of Business. Why is that out of shock? The faculty in that college showed leadership and values, integrity, and credibility. I thank the business school faculty, the alums, the students, and the broad advisory board, who have supported our efforts for an outside review. Again, not one of these constituencies has asked for reinstatement, but they understand governance and oversight of the board. Outside reviews, audits, and investigations by college boards are not unusual, contrary to what you've heard. Every year, the MSU board engages an outside firm to review the annual work of our chief financial officer, Lisa Fraice, and our internal auditor, Marilyn Turan. As a result of a high degree of professionalism, they embrace this independent effort because they know it will lead to a more transparent and accountable university. We ask these outside auditors to check the propriety of the CFO and internal audits work, make recommendations on processes, disclose weaknesses, advise of best practices and changes impacting our reporting, make us aware of frauds if they come to our attention. Sound familiar? It is exactly what we are asking our outside counsel to do on our Title IX policies and OIE investigations. We, as a board, do annual audits because it provides a necessary level of accountability to the university. There is an expectation that the employees will cooperate so that the university can make statements to the community and our stakeholders who rely on good process and oversight. This is also true for the department that monitors sexual transgressions of the faculty. We are subject to a three-year audit this year and have been advised we cannot demonstrate our compliance to a negotiated agreement with the Office of Civil Rights and the State Budget Office. Does anybody think that's a problem? You don't see Lisa and Marilyn running around the campus like their hair is on fire, worried about retaliation when it comes to their responsibilities. They don't, because they know the importance of cooperation, have nothing to hide, and have a high degree of professionalism, which appears sometimes to be absent at the faculty level and clearly not understood by the administration. Lisa and Marilyn understand their efforts to cooperate, make this university a better place. Unfortunately, we've been handcuffed in providing transparency to the MSU community as we try to mitigate an adverse event. It's not been easy managing both our fiduciary duty to the university and being transparent. And honestly, these should never be in conflict. As to the president, I sincerely regret that we've come at odds over this issue because you have done a lot of good things, and I wish you well in your next endeavor. The two are solely responsible for Title IX, and this shouldn't be in dispute. You signed an agreement acknowledging that fact, and the board has given you ample opportunity, direction, and has shared numerous concerns, and you failed us. I would ask all constituencies who have opposed our efforts to join hands with the board and to show us solidarity for our Title IX strategic planning initiatives and support these reviews of our processes and move this university to a higher standard. Three years is too long to wait. We need outside help. Stop the nonsense and embrace the common sense. Lastly, I will leave you with a few thoughts. Seven hundred and fifty million grow into a billion dollars by 2030. As I told our deans, this is not our aspirational goal for annual research dollars. This is the cost of rejected NASSER victim settlements by 2030. Do you think those resources that we have lost due to faculty sexual transgressions and cover-up has impacted our international research capabilities, our ability to attract talent? You know what comes to mind when I hear those numbers? No more NASSER. When I see smart, articulate swim and divers who fight every meeting for reinstatement, and the university tells them they have to be collateral damage for poor stewardship at this university, I respond, "No more NASSER." When I hear the anguish among our coaches who mentor and mold the Spartans of tomorrow, and they hear from parents of recruits of the concern around the culture on this campus at MSU, I think, "No more NASSER." When alums don't want to part with their hard-earned money to support the university's research or athletic programs because of their concern that their dollar is going to be used to compensate victim of the sexual transgressions of the faculty, I say, "No more NASSER." Somebody once said, "University politics may belong to the simplicity of the Middle East." I'm reminded of that truism every day on this campus. No more NASSER. Finally, on the eve of the big game, there's nothing about Michigan I like. I hope we spank their football team in what will be a hard-fought game. But if I'm being truly objective, I have to applaud the board and new president, Santa Ono, for establishing and embracing an independent ethics board to address the sexual abuses of faculty. If MSU was serious about reform after NASSER, this would be in place at MSU. Instead, we are still jerking around finding leadership and developing processes. You have to appreciate the irony that Santa is going to know who is naughty or nice. He's been doing that for centuries. Thank you.
Trustee Scott.
This, folks, is why it's hard to, you know, be on a board where we're supposed to speak with one voice because we don't always agree. I'm going to try to be brief. I want to thank the... Well, first, I want to congratulate our student award scholarship awardees. I'm going to start off positive first. Thank our faculty liaisons, our student liaisons, for what I felt was a very informative dialogue that we had with you all via Zoom last week, as well as our lunch, our breakfast that we had yesterday, the discourse, you all being comfortable enough to tell us exactly how you truly feel. I think that transparency is very important. I do recognize that as a member of the Board of Trustees, I am one person. It is very difficult, in my opinion, to be a part of a collective group. And as trustee Knacky Jefferson indicated, sometimes you really want to speak out and give people your point of view or your opinion. And for the greater good of our board, realize that you can't do that all the time. Myself and trustee T. Baye were two members of this Board of Trustees that you did not see public statements in the press. We have not spoken. I have dodged calls consistently since all of this broke out. I have not publicly came out to say anything regarding how I feel, what I believe to be the truth of what happened, my truth, et cetera. I will say that I find it concerning that we talk about wanting to build trust and we talk about wanting to heal when we aren't 100% transparent with relation to everything that transpired to get us into this position we are in today, which I think is very unfortunate. As an alum, as a parent of an alum, as a trustee, as someone who loves this university and bleeds green, it is very disconcerting to me that we have not always had the right motivations behind some of the things that we do, and then we justify actions in order to public-facing come off as doing things for the right reasons. I personally feel that in order for us to heal and in order for us to trust each other, those of us up here have to trust each other, and we don't, quite frankly. It's unfortunate that that distrust that we have amongst each other has played out into the inefficiencies that we have had as a board. The inability for us to come to decisions allowed weeks to transpire where we didn't have any communication to you all, didn't have any communication with our president, that resulted, I think, ultimately in him feeling that he couldn't work with us and therefore resigning. I think it is unfortunate that we come out of work sessions yesterday, and we have a former trustee knowing intimate details about things that we have discussed or gone through as a board, meaning someone within the eight of us is talking to a former trustee and giving information. I could just go on. I could talk way longer than Pat if we really wanted to be real about the concerns that I have about this board and the way that we move. It is not my intent to out any trustee publicly, although I really want to name names, and there are some that have nothing. And I will point out trustee Knacky Jefferson because I know she's running, and I know how hard it is for her to even talk, not have the ability to talk about some of the things that I know are at the tip of her tongue concerning the way certain things have transpired. My intent is not to out anyone, but I do want to say that we are not all in agreement with relation to what trustee O'Keefe just said. I take exception to some of the things that he just said. I do feel somewhat blindsided by some of the things that he just said, especially in light of conversations that I thought that we had, that we were going to try to collectively talk about things before we actually publicly spoke about them. But then, once again, here we are, that we're not really speaking with one voice. We're going to have a whole bunch of voices and statements out there, which, again, leaves those of us that do try to remain in compliance with our code of conduct and our code of ethics, I feel like we're hamstrung. And I feel like I want to break free and be loose quite frequently. I'm just so frustrated. I want to thank President Stanley for all of the great things that you did here at this university. We did not have a strategic plan. We had never had anyone, quite frankly, that cared about DEI, as far as I could see in the history of this university as much as you did. The strategic and very methodical way in which you went to make the appointments that you did and to make sure that we had the diversity that we do in the various EVP positions. I think about the fact that we now have Jabar Bennett, Dr. Jabar Bennett, here to try to make sure that this university is all in the same wavelength when it comes to DEI, that we don't have the siloed determinations from college to college or department to department, and that we do have some consistency and someone who is making sure that we're doing the things that we have put on paper as being important to us. I thank you for working with us because I think it probably is very difficult. I think it's difficult, quite frankly, to work with us. And God bless you for hanging in there the way that you did. Did you do everything right? Did you do everything perfectly? Could you have done things better? Absolutely. We are all human, and we should show each other grace. And I don't see a lot of that being shown. I'm a rotarian. I think one of my very first meetings, I talked about something that I try to always think about as I make decisions. And it's our four-way test. And the four-way test says, is it truth? Is it fear to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? Every single action you take, decision you make, you're supposed to say that to yourself. And I have to honestly say, when it came to some of the decisions that we made as a board, I failed in that because I did get wrapped up in some things that probably I should not have gotten wrapped up in. And I am just going to be honest about my own faults. And if other people don't want to be transparent about it, fine. But I will say that I was very upset about Dean Gupta. I did not understand everything that happened. I will say that because of the popularity that he had as a dean, because of the countless phone calls, text messages, and emails that I personally received concerning what happened with Dean Gupta, I can say because of my affiliation and love for Broad and the fact that I was concerned of what would happen when he left, I did have an issue with what you did. I'm being transparent. My concerns, which led me to agree to the Quinn Emanuel investigation, had to deal with some of the backdrop concerns related to who it was. And that is being honest. Okay, I'm going to leave it at that. You guys can do what you want, but I am just letting it out there as far as myself and being transparent. When I realized, because trustee Knacky Jefferson started pounding the table saying, "This is outside of our authority," and I'm going to say that to her credit. "Brianna, we can't do certain things that you want to do for those reasons." And she made it very clear what the confines were within which we could operate. I had to backtrack some of the things that I... Some of the motivations for some of the things that I agreed to. I had to then evaluate what was really the impetus for some of the things that we did. And so I apologize to this community because I think that maybe had I talked to Renee and had more of an understanding... I'm not an academic, so some of these things were, for me, not common knowledge because of my background being an attorney. I don't know all of these things. I am learning. I'm an imperfect person. I made a mistake. I made a decision that I probably never should have made, which started a whole domino effect that got us to where we are today. And I saw trustee T. Baye looking at her watch. I said it wasn't going to be long. I just feel like I'm just having a confession, like there could be a priest here, and I feel like I'm having a confession. I just got to get this off my chest. I'm sorry. I just... I have to be able to sleep at night, and I didn't get any sleep last night. And I really haven't been getting sleep at night because I'm concerned about digging heels in when we know we're wrong and then trying to justify things. And I do want us to move past this, but I don't see that happening unless we can all be honest. And it is... I personally want to see this board be better than it is, but when I can't trust my colleagues, that's a problem. And it's a huge issue for me because I've never, in my professional life... Why am I crying? What in the world is going on with me? I have never, in my professional life, been on a... We have to do better. We have to do better. Because I can't exist on this board the way that we are operating. This is very embarrassing to me, the way that we're operating. Oh, my God, I can't believe I'm crying. Please don't put this on camera. Okay, let me just breathe. I hope that we can get it together. I am all for the professional development. I feel that we need to absolutely 100% work on our conflict resolution amongst the board. You all deserve better from us than what you're getting. To resolve the lawsuit, I'm over it. I don't think it's in the best interest of the university to continue. And I know I'm not supposed to say... And I know I'm not supposed to say go against what the board is saying, but I just have to say how I feel. It's horrible to be cheering about what we do for Title IX and at the same time continuing to go down this track. And so again, I say when we dig our heels in and can't pivot, when we know that what we've done may not be the course that we should continue on, I have a problem with that. I don't think it's a sign of weakness to be able to say I made a mistake. I just don't. What else was I gonna say? Um, did I thank you, President Stanley? So sorry, you all. Um. I'm sorry. I I don't have anything else to say. I apologize. I don't normally cry. I'm normally not the emotional one on this board. But um I just thank you all and I ask that you give us grace to get our act together. It is my hope that we do that sooner rather than later. And I apologize to the children. I just want to apologize to you for being ignorant of quite a few things that I think have impacted you, which caused just a ripple effect that and I'm just so sorry that you are collateral damage, quite frankly. I, in my opinion, that's all I have to say.
Trustee Lee Beth.
Um, I know this is very unconventional, but I would like to at least yield from the beginning of my time to Joe.
I just um had a couple of things to say back to that because we're student liaisons and we only get the chance to speak right at the beginning. We don't get a chance to respond, but um ASMSU has asked repeated room for the O I E office and Title IX offices to be fixed. So I don't I don't like that. I'm hearing I'm I'm hearing the fact that you're looking to protect students when you haven't spoken to us. Um, thank you. Yeah. It feels like you are saving your own butts because of the certification process. If you really want to know how to protect students, ask us. Ask me, someone who has gone through O I E, someone who became a survivor for yet another time on this campus. Speak to the people who are actually at risk. You don't order an external investigation and go silent right after. Here's my card. I'm gonna give it to you. My cell is on the back and I'm expecting a call and I'll yield back to trustee TV.
Thank you, Joe. I will say that um in response to Joe, which I had already written down, um I talked to the student yesterday after our breakfast about sitting down and putting together a plan and to really use the things that they're gonna give us to work forward. Um, I'm sorry you were not there, Hannah. We missed you, but uh yes, I would we would I understand. We can work on that eight A M. Time again. I feel bad that that's twice you have to get up at eight A M., but we'll work through that. Um, but I just want to say this culture that we have on this campus of using the media to communicate with each other to me is embarrassing. And I am not going to say anything about what is happening because I don't believe that that is what we should be doing. If we need to communicate with each other, we need to sit at a table like we did yesterday and it may have not have gone the way that we all hoped it would, but we were looking in each other's eyes and having a conversation about what's best for this community. And we sat with you guys in the same way and said, we can, we all know we're committed to making this the best place and this kind of stuff with the media has got to stop on all ends. We cannot communicate this way anymore and I am vowing to continue to not communicate with all of you in the media. I would love to sit down. I would like to have more conversations as we did when we were talking about the interim president. I want to have more conversations. Uh, we had a conversations with the deans and I said exactly the same thing. I want to have more conversations. You are the here. You are the people that are here every day. You're doing the work. You are the faces of MSU. Some reason we become the face. We are not. You are. And we do need to listen to you and we need to communicate better, not through the media. And I will never communicate with you through the media and I will promise you that. I will not. So if you have questions about what I think, we can have a conversation, but it actually doesn't really matter individually what I think because we are collective. So we need to 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 meet collectively with each of you, not one-on-one. And again, I will continue to do that. I also want to recognize Swim and Dive. I I know you didn't get what you wanted today, but I have continued to vow that I'm not giving up on this and to me this was at least a step in a direction instead of not moving. I apologize that we can't start your season right now, but I am committed to bringing back or re-adding or however we want to use Swim and Dive. And I apologize that we couldn't do it for you today, but it's exactly what the students want and I'm listening to my constituents. I will continue to listen to the constituents and I will make decisions collectively with this board about what's best for this institution, not by myself. That's all I have to say.
Trustee Bassett.
Have you called on me?
Hmm.
You just broke her. So I majored in English. Um, can barely add, so um I stick to my own strengths. Zora Neale Hurston is one of my favorite authors and she talks about um being silent in your pain. And she says, if you are silent in your pain, they will kill you and say you enjoyed it. I just applaud all the folks who have spoken up since September ninth to now. I don't think that you should ever be silent about your own concerns and your own pain. It should never happen. I don't think that silence is protection. I think silence is weaponized against people. You should always lift your voice. And I do want to say that um I told you last time, September ninth, September ninth, I was I don't I don't know that you could tell, but I was super angry. Very, 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 very angry. The angriest I've ever been um on this board. Um, because of the uh resolution around voter protections um being taken off of the agenda. Um, I thought that was a a lack of moral courage and I just did not appreciate being affiliated with that kind of cowardice. And so I was I was angry um and I didn't say anything to you all about it. I just asked you one thing. I asked you to hold us accountable. And boy, have you like, that's what you all did with bigger, right? You have held us accountable um with several votes of no confidence, with um endless hours of of talking with um constituents, with talking with um the faculty and speaking with students. And some of that was not all bad. I did talk to the B S A about um the 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 importance of voting and thank you, Joe, for showing up for that as well. Um, so it hasn't been all bad, but anytime that you've asked me to to come, I I show up because I won't be silent. You have voted us in. So if you have summoned me, I will come and I will give you what my values are. I want to read um two quotes. So today I'm wearing Dr. Martin Luther King Junior on my um earrings and I just appreciate your work with H R Soror and getting um that that holiday recognized um in a proper way for this campus. The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character. That is the goal of true education. The second quote, education must sift. It must enable one to sift and weigh evidence to discern the true from the false, the real from the unreal and the facts from the fiction. And that's what I challenge you to do. This is an institution of higher learning, of education. Do not ever be lulled and fooled into a a place of complacency where you don't do your due diligence in figuring out what the values are of the leaders before you. I charge you first to locate your own values. Find them. Examine then your leadership. See where there's some synergy. See where there's misalignment. Then I challenge you to look at the values of every one of these people on this board. Yes, we are one body and yes, we are diverse. That actually is the beauty of a board. That you have diverse perspectives, diverse talents, diverse expertise. Again, all I have is English. Don't ask me to add up anything. But that diversity then brings to light all kinds of possibilities and opportunities. Our values though have to be around increasing hope and healing at MSU. I could tell you what my primary value is. Is love. Now I've been nonviolent since nineteen ninety-nine. I don't I don't, I practice nonviolence. Not saying that I'm proficient all the time. Not expert, but I'm practicing. That's my stated value is nonviolence, but more importantly, love. And not a love that makes you always feel good. Not a love that always makes you feel like, oh, you know, things are are gonna be all right. It's a love that you've given us. A love that holds you accountable. A love that challenges you. When you critique us, I feel love that you took the time to think about what you need from us and what you're not getting from us and then to have the courage to voice it is an act of radical transformative love. The love that lifts is a truthful love. So I appreciate you, trustee Scott, for speaking your truth. I know it's hard. I know we're all asked to be silent again. Mama Zora Neale Hurston would say you should not. You should not be silent. The truth always prevails and the truth is always love. So in this love, I want you to to measure me by that. If that's my stated value, measure me by my love, my love walk. I say I value equity inclusion. I I say I value these things. Do we though, as an institution? We talk about we law these um enrollment numbers. Great enrollment numbers, all this diversity, people of color. We don't say that the black student population declined. Everyone else increased. We law the the border trustee um folks who who got scholarships or that we have acknowledged for their hard work. Well, we don't say are there are no black and Latinx folks on that list. I want you to sift the truths from the fiction. We say we value equity and inclusion and we value women, yet we are in court today. The board is named Fighting Against Title IX, Fighting Against Equity um Access and Equity for Women. How? How does this happen? Our values do not match our actions. You have to judge people by their actions and their values. Demonstrate what their values are. Figure, I'm sorry, delineate what their values are, identify that and see how it's demonstrated. If it's not, call them out. All the things that my trustee, the my fellow trustees have said, I mostly agree with, quite frankly. We do need to do better. We have to be braver. Joe, you said that we fail to act. That's a lie. We act by not acting. Inaction is inaction. You have to do better than this. We have to do better than this and I I'm not telling you, you know, I I do ask you to trust us. One thing I I I had, you don't even know how many times I've rewritten this this whole thing. I mean, I stay up at night. I've had no sleep. Um, someone suggested drugs. I don't know. I don't do that very well. Try to take some tea and move on with my life. But I have not slept thinking about this response because I wanted to set all the records straight and to say all the ways that I've been maligned and all the ways I've been mistreated and all the ways racism and sexism and um all these other isms have shown up, ageism and Spartanism, all these kinds of things that showed up against me, right? And I wanted to just set the record straight and say, no, this will happen and this is what happens. I don't have time. You do that work. I come in love, which is always true. If you don't believe me, I don't have anything I can do about that. And I'm not telling you should. I'm not telling you that you should. I am asking that in this time, you coalesce. There's gotta be a moment where you decide to stop fighting. There's gotta be a moment where you decide the fight is actually to bring back a Spartan uni- unity. That's what the fight is. That's the fight. Stop fighting each other. Stop fighting each other. We have to come together at long last and say, you know what? This is what Spartan is supposed to be and this is who we are going to be. I have the benefit of meeting so many MSU alum and students and community members and staff and they're not even, oh, they're not even worried about this. They're living their best lives. They're out there being exemplary people. They're out there representing MSU in the ways that we should. Can we get back to that? That means cooperation, collaboration and accountability. I'm not afraid of that. I asked for it. You gave it to me in doses. Um, thanks. Appreciate that. Our stated values have to be evidenced by our actions. So listen. I was on elevator with Heather Swain and Kathy Wilber coming up here. And they were talking about the holiday. And I told them um I'm already tired in November. I'm tired. I'm not making any dressing. They can forget the yams. I'm not doing anything. I'm sitting my tail down. I would suggest you rest. I don't know if you know we're dressing in yams or collard greens, maybe not. I don't know. Well, I don't know, but you know, okay, so stuffing, stuffing. Dressing and stuffing are not the same, but I understand the connection. So yes, I'm not doing any of those things. I I would encourage you, we don't have a meeting next month. Take some time to rest. Breathe. Take some time to rest and it is with great regret that I have to announce holiday parties off.
You promised.
I I I take it back. I'm breaking the promise. I can't do it. I ain't got it for you. Uh, maybe next year, if we can get our act together and we can get our act together, maybe next year I can get my life together and we can have a um a nice holiday party, but this year I I can't do it. I'm already tired. In this moment, take some time to breathe, take some time to rest, take some time to reflect on who you are and who you want to be and who you want us to be and who you want Spartan Village, Spartan Nation to be. Take some time, then come back and fight together. Go Green.
Any discussion? Any opposed? Any any negatives?